Welcome to the January 8th meeting of the Chappaqua Board of Education. The board has been in executive session since six o'clock discussing employment history of particular person, receiving legal advice from counsel, discussing litigation and real estate matters. May I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:41?
I move that we reopen the public meeting by second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If anyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everyone back from our nice long break. I hope everyone had a very happy new year and had a lot of time spent with friends and family and a really enjoyable break. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. I wanted to mention that tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Seven Bridges, Dr. Lisa Demore will be speaking as part of the Chappaqua Speaker Series, which is a joint presentation by the CCSD and the Chappaqua PTA. Dr. Demore, who is the author of the book Under Pressure, she will be speaking on the topic "Navigating Today's Pressures With Your Teen: Helping Boys and Girls Manage Stress and Anxiety." I think it's a crucial topic, as all of you are probably aware, that stress and anxiety amongst our teens have reached epidemic proportions. So we're encouraging all of you to attend what we really feel will be a very enlightening and informative evening. That's tomorrow night. So thank you again to the PTA for partnering with us on that. Also upcoming in January, tickets are now on sale for the annual Chappaqua School Foundation Harlem Wizards basketball event on January 26th. We'll see how many people.
Always exciting.
Always exciting.
Some players are up here.
I know. I think a bunch of them will be up here.
We've got practice in the summer.
Start practicing. So tickets are starting to be available now. They are online. Again, it's January 26th. You'll get to see some of our very own administrators and faculty at that event. It's always fun. It raises a lot of funds for the Chappaqua School Foundation, so we hope you will continue coming out to watch the hijinks. I also want to mention that on tonight's agenda, for those of you who looked at it, you will notice that a number of our long-serving and much-beloved teachers and a particularly beloved administrator as well will be retiring at the end of this year. Now, we celebrate retirements at our June 3rd, excuse me, Board of Ed meeting, but I feel I'd be remiss if I did not mention how lucky we are here in Chappaqua to attract such incredible teachers and administrators for our children and how much we've appreciated the service of all the teachers that are listed in this agenda tonight. Many of them who have been here for countless number of years. George Manak, 28 years, I believe, in the math department. If you look at this list, Lisa Budacan is Becky, who's been here for a very long time. Everyone from, you know, Patricia Greco and Laura Trigley at Seven Bridges, Diane Medeo. It's a long and lengthy list, and they've served us tremendously, so we are looking forward to honoring them. But I really did want to mention Martin Fitzgerald, who is really, really beloved here. And we know it's an exciting time for him, and he's given us his best, and we look forward to whatever journey is in front of him. And we look forward, there'll be, you know, lots more love and tears in June, but I did want to mention that we're very fortunate to have them, have had them with us.
Jane, could I just take a moment just to connect to what you're saying in terms of why there are so many on this agenda?
Yes.
What happens, just for our community to understand, in our teacher's contract, there's a provision in there, a notification provision, that's connected with a stipend. So usually at this meeting, we have a number of retirees who've notified the district in order to access that provision in the contract, which is why there's so many on the agenda at one time. So I just, I did want to make that note in case people were wondering.
Right. And lastly for tonight, I just wanted to mention that this is the first of what will be several budget presentations this spring. Many of you who are here are used to hearing that. All aspects of the budget will be explained, and there will be opportunities for community input. But I did want to say on behalf of the board how much we appreciate the work that is put in by our administrators, and especially John Chow, who start this work at the very beginning of the year. John works tirelessly to ensure that this budget and our priorities align with the board's strategic questions, which we will discuss later on. Somehow, John always manages to present a budget that is fiscally responsible and continues to provide our students with a top-level education.
Thank you.
It's a lot of hard work, so I just wanted to mention that before we start the evening. So thank you all, and I think we're ready for the super.
Thank you. So I want to begin by wishing everyone a happy new year. I'm so glad everyone is back and we're ready to begin again after a nice, long break. And we're going to start with our Director of Athletics, who will come up and present our state champions for the fall season. So Jason, if you please, come on up with our girls.
Thank you, members of the board. Dr. Ackerman and--
You guys would go stand over by Jason because we record this, so it's got to be going to stand over by Mr. Semo.
Where would you like me to stand? Okay. So it is my pleasure to present to you our 2019 state championship 400 relay team. This year, this group of girls did phenomenal things the entire season. Not only were they able to accomplish a state championship in the pool, also a runner-up, second-place finish in Federation in that event, but members also had many second-place finishes during that championship meet. As a team this year, they were undefeated in their entire dual-meet season, finished runner-up as a team in the section, and just a committed group of girls that come from different clubs, various clubs that they swim with all year, as you can see from their wet hair, as they finish practices a little bit earlier to be here. But also credit to our coach Suzanne Guziak, who really puts in a ton of effort with the girls, with her staff, just to make sure that all of the, they're coming together from all the different groups. And it's something that you see, they embrace, you know, that G-swim mentality when they come together. So with that, the time that they ran in their 400 free championship relay, it was also an All-American consideration time. And they also had a couple other All-American consideration times throughout the season and also at that meet. So we want to commend you for all of your efforts and your hard work and the tremendous accomplishment that you were able to do on that day. So congratulations. I know members of the board, I'll open it up to you so that you can offer comments or questions.
Well, this is what we actually usually do. So Jason, we'd like you to introduce each of our swimmers, and then we'd like to hear from you about your experience on the team this season.
So Sabrina Johnson, why don't you go first?
Sabrina, come on up to the microphone. The mic, the mic for fun. Yay, Sabrina! You just want to hear a little bit about the season and what it meant to you and, you know?
Okay, so I'm a sophomore, and at States I swam the 200 medley relay, the 50 free, the 100 back, and the 400 free relay. And I feel like as a whole, the team is just like a great community because we all, mostly all of us do club swimming, so we all already have like a good bond with each other, even if we're on different teams. So it was, it's always fun just racing with them and against them at these meets in the beginning of the fall.
It's great. Thank you.
Next, we have Kristen Cornish.
I'm a junior, and I swam the 500 free, the 200 free, and the 400 free relay.
And?
Talk about some of the other athletes that you had at the meet.
What?
Talk about some of the other athletes that you had at the meet, because I know you had a big championship meet. You won a podium for a couple of different things.
Yeah, I got second in the 200 free and fourth in the 500 free, which was a little disappointing because I won last year. But I have an amazing team who kind of helped me get over it and really excited for the four free relay where we all really went as hard as we could.
Great. Congrats. Congratulations.
Mazu is next.
Is this the order you're swimming?
Yeah.
No? What order? I'm sorry, what order did you swim in?
I was first, Izzy was second, and Rena was third, and Kristen was last.
So the way you are.
Okay.
So I'm a sophomore. At States, I swam the two medley relay, the 100 back, the 50 free, and the four freestyle relay. At States, I was injured, so it wasn't really the best for me, but still for the four free relay, I didn't want to let my teammates down, and I really wanted to like pull out everything I had for this last race. So we managed to get some good times.
That's great. Great. Congrats.
Okay, and last, we have Isabella Pies.
Hi, I'm a sophomore, and at States I swam the 100 butterfly, the 100 freestyle, 200 freestyle relay, and 400 freestyle relay. And I think that we were really motivated to win this year because last year, we were upset that we didn't, and it was really good for pushing us to get that edge, so it was fun.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Because you're the last one, so you're lucky. We usually don't have sophomores coming here for this. It's usually seniors, maybe some juniors. So what made you, your team, so different that we have such young female athletes in front of us today with such a tremendous accomplishment?
Yeah. I think that since we kind of like grew up on the same team together, and we've been swimming alongside each other some of us since we were very young, we've been pushing each other from a young age, and it's definitely helped us bring each other up, so.
All of you are on the same club team?
Um, all except Emma.
All right. You've got to have an outlier.
I mean, it is tremendous to have sophomores and juniors standing in front of us today who've accomplished this. I mean, yeah, like multiple years.
So what are your goals for next year?
I want to know--
What's your goal for next year, since you should all be back today, right?
Yeah, we want to beat the Catholic schools.
Okay.
I was going to ask about the slippers, because I see two of you have the identical slippers that look really great. Is this a thing, or do you recommend them?
I mean, this is our Christmas gifts, right?
I have noticed with some of the other female sports, that's like post-workout, like shoe of choice, so I get it.
Those look especially nice. I just want to say that we all realize how much work and discipline this takes to have the accomplishments that you've received. And it takes a lot of balance of your academic lives, personal, social lives, and your sports activities. And so I just want to commend you for all of those accomplishments, and thank you for representing Greeley in such a wonderful way.
Sure. Nothing like being put on the spot. But to Dr. Ackerman's point, yes, these girls are relatively young. We had several other athletes go to the state meet who performed well as well, that are also in that sophomore/junior age bracket. And I think it's a testament to the program as a whole. Historically, Greeley has been known as a powerhouse in swimming, and I think it inspires young swimmers in these club teams when they see their older kids and then their friends, and they get pulled along, and, you know, greatness breeds greatness. And so I think these girls have seen the work of their older peers and are clearly setting an example for their current team members and their younger team members. And to Ms. Tipp's point of the discipline it takes to swim at that level, it is truly a tremendous amount of discipline. Morning practices, evening practices, all-day weekend meets, and then high school swimming, I'd like to think reminds them of the reason they started, because it's a little more fun. It's a sense of pride to swim for Greeley and to represent their school, and these athletes have done a tremendous job of doing that. And Coach K and I are extremely proud of them, as are their parents and their teammates. So kudos to them, and thank you for recognizing their accomplishments.
That's great. So what we usually do is we usually take a big picture, and we put it out on social media, if that's okay with everyone, and we let everyone know how awesome you are.
Before we take the picture, I'd like to ask, Ms. Oregon has a gift for each of the girls.
Oh, great. Go sports booster.
Yes, so we wanted to recognize your achievement. Congratulations on an excellent season. And--
All right. So we'll actually move over to the screen over there, and if the board can get up--
But I have one quick question.
Oh.
What was the time?
3:29 left. So each athlete, so collectively that's 16 laps, each athlete swims four laps in the pool. So, and most of them swam a personal record for their season.
Okay, I couldn't walk with that. Congratulations. That's amazing.
But that is amazing. Okay, so we will make you. Okay. So I just want to reiterate, I know Jane has already mentioned, we have a huge speaker coming tomorrow. We're so excited, because not only is she going to be speaking with our parents, but working with the PTA, we've been able to leverage her visit. She'll be speaking with students, she'll be working with our counseling staff, we have a session for our faculty, then we have administrative book study with our principals and our assistant principals, which we've opened to our fellowship, and then we have our parent meeting. So we have a lot going on tomorrow with Lisa, and I am so, I'm personally so excited she's coming, because I learned a lot from her book. I started using her strategies with my own daughter. So we're in for a great day, and I just want to thank Lori Townsend, because she is working with us on all our author visits, and we really appreciate our collaboration with the PTA. So thank you, Lori. And then I just want to give you through our next authors coming in February. And this was really prompted by Joe Maza, and we have an opportunity to work with Phyllis, who is the author of Middle School Matters. And again, we'll have opportunities throughout the day for her to meet with our faculty and our staff and after school, and share her insights about things that we can do with our middle school program and our middle school students to make that experience more powerful for them at that level. And then she'll be meeting with parents in the evening. And for both of these sessions, we've been able to invite colleagues from the region to attend as well, so we're just really excited to be able to host this, not only for our own staff and our own families, but for our entire community, so.
Are we doing that for tomorrow's program?
Yes, we are. We are, and we, we've had a sign-up process that we've sent out to the region, to our colleagues, so.
That's great. How many, how many other districts are attending?
If you give me a minute, I could look it and see.
I know, I sent it out to 76 colleagues, 76 superintendents, and then Tony and Adam have sent it out to their own listservs.
And we tweeted it and put it on social media.
So while Adam's looking up that, let me continue. So I just wanted to share that in the agenda you'll see tonight, that we've created a new position. So with Heidi's retirement for the, as the Director of PPS, and collaborating with my colleagues and understanding what other districts around the region have done in terms of leading our special, their special education programs, we think at this point it makes sense for us to elevate that position. I know that at one point in my career, I served as the Assistant Superintendent for Pupae Personnel Services, and that opportunity allowed me to have better oversight and understanding of the entire curricular program that supported students that were struggling. And I also know that if we elevate the position in this way, we'll have a different candidate pool that would probably be more appropriate for a district like ours. So with real consideration to what this would mean for the district, adding another member to the cabinet, we feel like this is really important for us to do at this time, particularly on feedback that we're receiving through the process that we've undertake, taken with Dr. McGuff. So I am going to recommend to you tonight in the agenda that we abolish the directorship and create the Assistant Superintendent of Pupae Personnel Services position, and we're able to do that without a significant cost to the district, based on the outgoing salary of the current person in the directorship. We also are going to be recommending to you, like we did with Seven Bridges, that we hire a search firm for this position, and Tony will be the liaison to facilitate that process for us, because when I moved Mr. Corsilia up to the high school, that was very disruptive for Seven Bridges. And we all know, based on some of the decisions we've had to make this year to support special education and to bring in Dr. McGuff to take a look at our special education program, it makes sense for us to have an impartial person come in and facilitate this process for the district, so we can make sure all voices are heard as we search for our new leader of this program. And we also know that since this is a difficult position for us to hire for, the search itself should be confidential and one that we can recruit candidates to come to this district. So Tony, do you want to talk a little bit about your conversations with--
Sure.
HYA?
Yes, yeah, so HYA, and we, I spoke with the, our contact who we worked with on the Seven Bridges search. And fortunately, HYA has actively been involved, so they're nationally known for their superintendent searches, but they've also been more recently actively involved in similar searches for assistant superintendents for PPS or directors of PPS, because they are complicated positions and difficult to fill. And so they recently actually helped Pellum fill that position in their district under the same title. So we had a meeting about a couple of weeks ago, talked about a timeline, what it might look like, what we were looking for in a candidate initially, and we really appreciated HYA's approach. And so the recommendation will be to partner with them in a contract, and the process will involve posting in the New York Times. That would go out in, at the end of this month. They would do a vetting of initial candidates and put together a candidate slate for us. Also, they would facilitate various focus groups to hear from parents, from staff, from the board, what we're looking for in an Assistant Superintendent for PPS. And that process would unfold between like six and eight weeks, and our goal would be to appoint someone in March, or present someone to you in March, in the hopes that we may be able to have someone start as early as April 1st to have some transition time with Dr. McCarthy. So we're excited. The HYA brings a lot of experience to the table, they have a lot of contacts, and so they're really able to put in outfielders, not only locally, but in the broader region in Jersey, in Connecticut, New York City, Long Island. And so we're really excited about the candidate pool, in addition to elevating the title, what that means for us.
So I also thought it would be helpful at this point if Adam can give an update on Dr. McGuff.
Yeah, Dr. McGuff has been here three times already doing her work, three different days. She will be here an additional day tomorrow to do some work. She's been working, interviewing staff members, including administrators, teachers, clinicians that are involved in our special education, educational assessments. Her experience and knowledge is really shining through through the process. She's a pleasure to work with. We hope to have her at the board meeting on February 12th to update the board on her findings thus far.
Initially, we're going to do that the second meeting in January, but she'll be out of the country.
Okay.
So that's why we have to push it to the February meeting.
All right.
So then, let me see. Okay, so on the agenda, you'll also see that there is a cybersecurity resolution. And so one of the things that Josh is recommending is, although he doesn't feel at this time we have any compromises in the system, he'd like to have a company come in and test the system as a matter of practice. So that's what this item is on the agenda. I just wanted to explain it a little bit more, because the title is kind of odd, but it's definitely something that we need to be doing based on the current climate in terms of what districts have been dealing with in other areas of New York with--
Shutting down--
People with bad intentions coming in and trying to infiltrate their systems. Okay, so then we also have a PR consultant on the agenda. So Tony, would you like to talk a little bit about this?
Yes, definitely. Extensive process looking to find someone to contract with for PR consultant/specialist, so we're excited to recommend Courtney Davis-Walker tonight. Several members of the board, and Christine and I interviewed candidates, and Ms. Walker was a candidate that we'd like to move forward. She's someone who started her career as a page at NBC, which is a really difficult program to be accepted into. She spent six years at NBC, where she worked as everything from a publicist to a communications coordinator and manager of executive events. Most recently, she's worked locally here in Westchester as part of the Westchester Food Bank. She's also been a PR specialist and marketing consultant for Thompson &amp; Bender, Kevin Sullivan Communications, and Hudson River Museum. In 2005, she was named the NBC Universal Ovation Award winner, and we're excited to partner with her. And the board members over there can speak to the interview process. It was a really great conversation to hear her thoughts around how to communicate, how to respond to issues in the community, and how to communicate in a way that's clear and understandable to everyone with just the right amount of information. So excited to recommend her.
Yeah, we were very happy with her. Holly and I's part of the communications committee met with her and really feel that she will bring a lot to the table in terms of really, you know, positive messaging, making sure that the community understands what's going on, really highlighting all the good work that's being done in the district, and she really has a good skill set and is aware of like what our needs are. So we felt that she was very well-qualified.
Okay, and that is the conclusion of this part of my superintendent's report, but I did want to preview just a few things for our next meeting. So at our next meeting, I'll be sharing a draft of the 2021 calendar. Okay? And then what would happen would be that we would have an opportunity for people to make comments, and then I would present to you the recommended calendar at the first meeting in February. I know people are asking about it. They're wondering when we're going to start. I have a few things I want to look into before I make a recommendation to you, or at least a proposal to you at the next meeting, based on the experience that our kids had on the two weeks, two-week break. So I'm doing a little bit more legwork, but I will have something for you on June 22nd. So--
January 22nd.
January 22nd, sorry?
That's right, we knew what you meant.
Yes, so I know that you had mentioned our retirees, and obviously we have a lot of people on the agenda tonight that we're going to miss dearly. I think the person who probably will have the most impact on the agenda is Martin, and that process is different than everybody else, because it's not a traditional hiring process when you're looking to replace building leadership. So Tony has already begun the process of advertising for Martin's position, and I'll likely communicate out directly with the Bell parents on Monday. Tony or I will send them communication regarding the search. I'll send something out to the entire community about the, if the board approves the recommendation tonight about the Assistant Superintendency and the search consultant by Friday, because we would want to let them know the opportunities that they will have to come and give input through the consultant, consultant facilitation process. So I just wanted to mention those two pieces of information. And then at our next meeting, I'll be sending communication out to the high school families and students on Monday regarding a follow-up to the grading changes that were shared with the board in 2017. And then Mr. Corsilia will be at the June 22nd meeting to explain how we're moving forward in more detail and answer questions. Okay, so just--
January 22nd.
January, oh my God, what's wrong with me? Really wanted to be warmer.
You're looking for warm weather.
I'm trying to get to June, that's what I'm trying to do.
That's all right.
Yeah, so January. This is all happening at the next meeting. I'll just say the next meeting. So I just wanted to share those pieces of information before we moved into the budget preview. Okay?
Yep.
All right, so can we, yes?
As you transition, just as an update to answer Vicki's question, we have seven other districts. Friends, colleagues from Brewster, Eastchester, Katona, Osning, Putnam Valley, Valhalla, and Greenwich are all coming tomorrow to hear the keynote, which is great, and it helps them certainly, but also helps us to, you know, make connections and share best practices. So we're happy to have--
Yeah, thank you for doing that, that's great. All right. It's exciting. We love opening our doors. And we've had some opportunities in some other districts too, so it's great to reciprocate. All right, so our budget preview. Am I hooked up to this, Jane, John? Can I?
I have to do it this way. Just present.
Okay, so this is the meeting where we just do a quick snapshot of what we're thinking. And then in future meetings, we go in much more detail as to what the budget looks like before we propose the recommended budget to you for adoption. So just in terms of an overview, we start talking about the budget in August, and then in October and November and December, we really start looking at the numbers and what we need. And then over the course of the next few months, you'll see what we need by component and some recommendations that we'll be making on moving forward in order to support our students in the way that we need to in 2021. And then, of course, we do this in a way that is found, that the foundation of our budget is based on the Board of Education questions, which generally have us building a budget that is progressive and pushes our thinking around best practices in educating our students and supporting a robust extracurricular program, but also doing this in a way that's fiscally responsible in our community. And then, as you are aware, we have a strategic plan in place where we've defined the skills and attribute we feel, attributes we feel are most important to our students as they grow, both academically and socially, in our program here in our district. And we also have a strategic plan in place that has target areas and priorities for us that we think about as we're coming together and talking about what we need in order to provide the best possible program for our kids. We have four major areas that we know drive our thinking in addition to our foundational backdrop. The first is class size, right? The second is our program. The third is our infrastructure, and the fourth is what do we-- Um, and then in October and November and December, we really start looking at the numbers and what we need. And then over the course of, um, the next few months, you'll see what we need by component, um, and some recommendations that we'll be making on moving forward in order to support our students in the way that we need to in 2021. And then, of course, we do this in a way that is found, um, that the foundation of our budget is, um, based on the Board of Education questions with generally, um, have us, uh, building a budget that is progressive and pushes our thinking around best practices in educating our students and supporting a robust extracurricular program, but also doing this in a way that's fiscally responsible in our community. And then, as, um, you are aware, we have a, we have a strategic plan in place, um, where we've defined the skills and attribute we feel, attributes we feel are most important to our students as they, um, grow both academically and socially in our program here in our district. And we also have a strategic plan in place that has target areas and priorities for us that we think about as we're coming, um, together and talking about what we need in order to provide the best possible program for our kids. Um, we have four major areas that we know drive our thinking in addition to our, our foundational backdrop. Um, the first is class size, right? Um, the second is our program. The third is our infrastructure. And the fourth is what, what do we need to, um, make sure that we are, um, accountable for in terms of our contracts with our units. Um, and then there's a whole bunch of, um, factors that go in the, to the proposed budget to you. That, I mean, I don't need to read this off, but, um, it's not only about stakeholder feedback, but it's about, um, decisions in, in terms of regulations and mandates that we need to, to follow that are upcoming, that we need to anticipate. It's about, um, allocations that we receive from the state. Um, it's about our grant allocations from the federal government. So there's all kinds of, um, um, things that we think about as we're, we're developing the final budget in addition to CPI and other areas, um, that go into the final budget. Um, and then we have our operating standards, and these have stayed pretty consistent over the course of the past three years, maintaining our tradition of excellence, having a safe and supportive environment, um, continuing to approve our instructional program, um, making sure we're innovative in terms of our technology and our spaces, um, maximizing our personnel, high-quality teachers and administrators, um, optimizing our communication structures, maintaining our class size, um, maintaining our professional learning culture here, um, maintaining teaming at the middle school, um, make sure, making sure our courses, particularly at the high school, are, um, are deep, our extracurricular program, um, and activities are robust, um, that we have cross-disciplinary experiences in this district, that our facilities continue to be top-notch, um, that our offices function efficiently. Um, and then we're always concerned about our overtime. That's always a, that's always a priority for us to make sure that we reduce that as much as possible. So, these are, in terms of other things that we know will impact our budget this year. Um, you can see our projected enrollment. Um, we know definitively contracts for most of our units. Um, the, uh, we know our ERS numbers, we know our debt services, we know our growth factor. We know our health insurance premiums, and we know our equalization rates. But these are the things that are unknown still. Um, TRS, state aid, our, um, our administrator's contract, we're in, in the process of negotiating that contract for next year. That's our one contract that's out. Our CPI, our tax cap numbers, our transportation costs, um, our special education placements are also always pending at this point, and our assessed tax valuations. And this is pretty consistent over the course of the year, right? These, we're, these are typical unknowns at this point. Um, it just, in terms of the contracts, it, it just depends on the year which contracts are out. So, um, but this is pretty stable.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Out of, out of the unknowns, that one piece that is going to have the largest impact is the first item is the TRS. Uh, because we already got notice that, uh, there will be an increase. And the increase is probably going to be higher than one percentage point. And each one percentage point represents an increase of $600,000. So, that piece is going to have a major impact on our budget.
Okay. Could you go through some of the known factors? Um, I know ERS has a much lesser impact than TRS, but has it gone up or down?
We, we can go over that. Uh, we have all the, all the detail information.
Or do I do that at the next, at the next meeting?
So, for example, for, for the projected, uh, enrollment, we based on the, the beds date, data that we collected in October. And then also, we added in the, um, the conifer development. We think that the conifer is going to come online. It may not be September 1st, but it's going to be during the next year. So we have added in the, the, into the projections. So when we look at the slight increase in elementary school, we're talking about increase of two students. And, uh, the slight decrease in middle school, we're talking about a slight decrease of, uh, 15 students. And the high school, we're looking at a decrease of 32 students. So, overall, at this point, you know, we will keep adjusting our numbers. We're looking at a decrease of 45 students for the entire district, uh, from this year going to next year. You want me to go over the other parts too?
So it's a net decrease?
Net decrease.
Even though this says projected slight enrollment increase?
I don't understand.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Right. Um, I'm curious why it says projected slight enrollment increase?
Increase, when it's a net decrease.
Can you go back one slide?
Oh, should be decrease, sorry.
Oh.
Okay, that word is wrong, should be decrease.
Right.
There is, uh, a net decrease. Sorry, I made a mistake.
That's okay.
And then the contract for the three units, uh, other than CAA, we have contracts in place. And the employee retirement system, the ERS, is going to remain the same. Uh, the debt service, we're not borrowing anything this year, so the debt service is going to be constant. Um, assessment growth factor, we already have, is going up 1.03%, which is a good thing. Uh, that means our, uh, tax cap is going to be higher. Uh, it's going to be, you know, the tax cap calculation is you use the CPI, CPI or 2%, whichever is less. And then you add the assessment growth factor. So, our number could be close to 3%. Um, that's, that's the tax cap. But of course, we're going to come under, later on, you will see the slide that we're going to say, we, we're making the, the administration is making a commitment that we're going to come under the tax cap. And then the health insurance premium is going to go up 3.5%. We already know, uh, that number. Which, if you look at the industry average, this is very, very low. Uh, industry average is probably 8 or 9%. Um, and the equalization rates we have for both town, they're both finalized now. And the equalization rate for both town, town is going up very, very slightly. No, actually, it's going down very, very slightly. Uh, next year, Newcastle is going to be 19.05, and the current year is 19.1. So when you see the assessment rate goes, uh, the equalization rate goes down, that, that means the true value is actually going up. So, what is saying is that the value is going up, the, the market value for, uh, real estate is going up slightly, uh, for the two towns.
So at this point, we always, um, go back to this $42 million bond.
Right.
And it's important that we reiterate that it won't impact the tax levy this year. And these are all the reasons, um, listed up, up here that we've gone over multiple times as to why the bond will continue not to impact the tax levy, um, moving forward into the, the new budget season. And then, um, we're still, we're not at a point where we would be able to say whether or not we would have any capital project considerations for you at this point in the budget process. So we may come back to that at another point and say, okay, we do have some considerations that we'd like you to, um, talk about in the future. Alright, so John, do you?
Also, yeah, I'll go over, so there are, uh, nine budgets here. And if you look at the, the most. So, if you look at the most, two most recent budget, budget increases, they are higher. Uh, for example, for 1819 is 2.5% budget to budget increase. And, uh, uh, the 1920, the budget to budget increase is 2.93. It, they are both because of the debt service that we had to borrow for the $42.5 million budget. But because the previous slide we talked about, there's no impact on the tax levy. So when you look at the left tax levy, they don't correspond to the large increase in, um, in the budget increase. So for example, for the current year, the 1920 budget, the budget increase is 2.93, but the tax levy increase is really just 0.94%. So it's less than one percentage, uh, point.
Yeah, John, I wonder if next time you could maybe, um, change this graph a little bit and have recent budget increases versus, um, tax levy increases and put, put another bar?
We can do that.
For tax levy, just so people can see and understand how different.
So we can do that.
Because of the differences.
Yeah, actually, I have the same request, Vicki.
Okay.
Okay. And as for the other slide on, on the website, this is posted already. So we, we change it to, you know, the enrollment, there will be a decrease, projected decrease. And, uh, the next slide is the most recent, uh, eight budgets, so there are seven increases. We, I'll just give you the summaries in the next slide. Is that if you look at the cumulative increases, uh, we're looking at seven increases, 12.43%, uh, but average is 1.78%. And tax levy is even lower, is 1.27%. And you see the tax rates. And discrepancy between the two, uh, towns when it comes to the tax rate is really because of the, uh, equalization rates. And they really, uh, you know, have very major impact on the actual tax rates.
Quick question on that previous slide, John. The, where it says the tax rate, Newcastle, 9.28%, and then Mount Pleasant has 1.968. Is, are those supposed to both be numbers, or are they both supposed to be percentages?
Uh, it should be. Should be. It should be actually number, not percentage. And then you do, ever, wait a minute. It should be the percentage, sorry. Because at the end is where really the tax rate increase, 1.32%, and it's using 9.255 by 7. So these are, these are all percentage.
Okay.
Okay. We can make it clear, I think we missed a percentage.
Yeah.
You know, that listed here. So that should be percent. And this is the tax cap, this has been placed since, um, the, the budget year 1213. So, just wanted to reiterate is that, uh, you know, there's a, there's a cap. And that, that will influence whether it's going to be a, um, single majority approval or whether it's going to be, uh, 60% majority in, uh, approval. So, so that's the tax cap calculations.
Right, so in terms of our next steps, um, we have to figure out as many of those unknowns as possible. So a lot of that is just a waiting game for more information. Um, we're still in the process of finalizing our personnel with the administrative team. Um, we have to look to see if there's any additional places we'll be saving money as we balance out the budget. And then on the third, we'll have a, um, a more definitive, uh, amount for your consideration as we move forward in terms of the budgeting process. Um, but we'll make sure that whatever we, we propose is underneath the, the limit. Um, so what would be helpful for us, um, as we, as our, as we prepare and our colleagues prepare to present the budget to you, um, in, in sections and then the overall budget, what, what are some questions? Or what is some information that you want to make sure that we cover, other than what we traditionally cover when we present to the Board of Education? Is there anything that? Um, and if you don't have anything you can think of now, you can just send us an email. So we, we just want to make sure we have everything covered.
Get the input of what we, we want to see in budget.
Yeah. So, at, at this point, is, does anyone have anything they want to share to, for John and us? Aye? Holly, did you?
Vicki actually mentioned the, the request I had.
I don't have anything at this, at this point in time.
Right, we'll likely send some things, you know, as we, as the season progresses and we have some questions.
I mean, these are broad strokes.
Right.
Um, and, okay, thank you. And then, this is just the general calendar. The only thing that's, um, missing on here, because we, we usually work and set that up after this meeting, is, as the, is working with the PTA to set up our parent.
Right.
Opportunities for parents to come and speak with John and I, and, and Tony and Adam, and give us feedback. Um, so we'll set that up in the near future, but, um, on March.
We usually have a daytime and a nighttime session, right, for parents to attend.
So, March 3rd, then you'll have a, a more complete, uh, version of what the budget will look like moving forward, um, from us at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Christine, is that when you think you would have, um, a better idea about whether there'd be any capital projects?
By the 3rd? Yes, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you both.
Okay, next, our committee reports. Um, we're just back from vacation, so I'm not sure that there will be anything in terms of communications. I think you've covered that we have, have a contract with a new, um, PR consultant that we're excited about. And, and we have our next communications meeting at the end of the month. Um, anyone else have anything to report? Whether it's facilities or policy or anything, no?
Policies on the agenda.
Policy on the agenda.
Can I, um, can I just report, um, to the board that the, I had met with the safety task force?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, they have presented their recommendations to me regarding their study, um, of Greeley and moving forward or not with a single point of entry model.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'll be presenting to you at the next meeting their recommendation and then my ultimate recommendation based on their feedback.
Okay.
And I know members from the, um, task force probably will attend that meeting too and make comments about the process.
Okay.
So I just want to forecast that for you.
Okay, at the next meeting, I'll tell you what you're saying.
I'm, notice I'm saying the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Instead of.
Oh, J word.
Yes.
Okay.
John, is there a date set for the next facilities committee meeting?
We're, we're going to try to set up a small, small, uh, facilities committee meetings to make some decision. Because, you know, one item that we need to talk about is, we talked about in August, uh, during the multi-year financial planning, uh, we talked about possibly increasing the interfund transfer. So, so that's one of the topics. So we will have a meeting scheduled probably next week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, approvals and ratifications. Um, item 3.1 involves minutes from, what?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, I jumped right over it, I'm so sorry. Um, public comment period, as many of you probably know, we, uh, welcome public comments. Uh, with respect, uh, to, for each other's time, we ask that you limit any comments to three minutes. Um, and at the conclusion of the public comment period, um, board members may have a discussion on themselves regarding any comments presented. So sorry, would anyone like to make a public comment this evening? Nope, all good. Okay, thank you. Okay, approvals and ratifications. Item 3.1, uh, involves the minutes from the November 13th, 2019 board meeting that were tabled at our last meeting. So I'd like to get a motion to move it off the table, and then I can maybe explain a little what, what our situation is. So can I have a motion, um, to, um, take it off, take item 3.1 off the table?
I move to take it off the table.
A second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, item 3.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the November 13th, 2019 board meeting? Maybe we'll make a motion and discuss this. Um, can we move?
I move item 3.1.
Okay, I will second item 3.1. Um, discussion. Um, I can let you discuss what the issue is, if you like?
Sure, it's a, it's a minor matter, and I'd like to go over it very quickly, so we can just move on.
Right.
From it. Um, we have been opening the meetings in a different way than we had in the past. And, um, and we did so at that meeting on November 13th. Um, uh, we didn't think it was necessary for every single board member to be in the spot where we opened the meeting. So, um, so apparently, board members are not a few steps from where they started, they're marked as absent. And so, I was present at that meeting, but not in a specific location, I was marked as absent. So I objected to that, and I just want that to be noted in the minutes. And I'll vote no on the minutes for that reason, and we will move on. But I understand why they have to be written in this way, so there is no issue for me.
Right, it's a technical issue. It's all a technical issue.
And, um, so my vote merely reflects the fact that I believe I was present.
Right. So, just in general things, for anyone that does look at our minutes, um, we had traditionally opened our meetings with, with three of us, uh, the majority of us opening a meeting and then going into an executive session. And upon discussions with our counsel and our clerk, we realized that we really all should be present, or it should say that we're absent from the opening of the meeting, even though the minutes would reflect at what point the person joined the meeting. Even just a few minutes later.
Even if we aren't actually present.
Even if they're in the building, but down the hall waiting for executive session. So it's just a technical matter, um, but we understand, you know, that, um, everyone wants to be, you know, properly noted in the minutes, so, um, so that's the explanation. Um, so.
So why does it have to happen that way?
We were told by our counsel that, that.
We need to be physically present.
We need to be physically present.
In the spot.
Since we are.
In the spot, not the venue.
Right, because we're taking a vote. We're taking a vote to open the public meeting. We all have to be in the same place to vote on the opening of the public meeting. Or else it's considered, even though three of us are voting and it's a majority, it really should reflect all of us voting to open the meeting.
That's correct.
So that's how we were advised by counsel. So, uh, after a bunch of discussions, just to make sure that we were in compliance, um, it was indicated that any time that we open a meeting with less than the full board, it should reflect the votes of the parties present, and then say that the other parties were absent for that, but joined the meeting. Joined the meeting, even if it's a minute or two later at our executive session. Again, that was advice of counsel.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so can I, uh, we got a motion to do this, so all in favor of item 3.1? Aye? Any opposition? Aye? Nay, motion carries?
No.
Okay.
I should say no.
Okay, that's alright, motion carries and we'll move on. Item 3.2, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the December 11th, 2019 board meeting? Can I have a motion to approve item 3.2?
I move item 3.2.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Item three point three, we move on to policy. This involves policy number five oh five two, harassment, bullying, discrimination, prevention, and intervention. We had the first meeting, the first reading at our last meeting, so this is to move that upon the first reading of this policy as presented at this meeting.
Yeah, so I move item three point three, and I do believe that that paragraph.
Should be amended, yes.
From the agenda.
Right, I'm just looking at that upon the second reading, right? Can we just say it as amended? Okay. So if we can.
Different comma after sex.
Excuse me?
I think we're still working on the motion.
Yes, sorry.
Second reading.
Right. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve five oh five two, item three point three, policy five oh five two, as amended in the agenda, that this is our second reading?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? You had a discussion about a comma?
So different comma after sex.
You mean where nor has changed to where?
Yes.
Okay, we can add a comment there.
I thought it was there, in what I had seen earlier. That's funny, because I think a copy we had, it was there.
There was also a change that had been made from the previous meeting that hasn't, that's not showing up there as well.
The one that I had suggested?
It's the same one that I had, that I had actually suggested at the first reading.
Right.
Do you have your notes on that?
Lisa, did you get the?
It was the.
The parenthetical.
I remember. I just want to know where it needs to be.
It's under harassment and after gender? Yeah, something is not reflected the way it should be. It should read there.
I don't know that this is the most recent version.
Yeah, I think, I think that's. Sorry, sometimes with the editing software, it's hard to read what's there or not.
I sent these both today, so when you had sent them to me.
Right.
All right, so the.
It should read, it should read in that section, sort of the second to last sentence. Acts of harassment and bullying shall include, but not be limited to, those acts based on a person's actual or perceived race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practice, disability, sexual orientation, gender, and then we should add the parenthetical.
Identity.
Identity and expression.
Yeah, this is not the most recent one that Margot had updated.
Yes, I think the wrong one just got put up there.
Okay.
Let's just have a third.
Well, let's just agree to have a third reading.
Yes, I think there might just be. Just, I think the wrong copy got in here.
Can we also?
Do we have the right copy? Can we just bring it up?
As we're editing, can we take out the extra space after physical safety, under harassment? Before the semi-call?
Where are we looking?
In B, under harassment, at the end of B, before C, there's just an extra space.
Do we have, do we have the latest copy?
I have it up on here. I'm going to suggest we table it. Yeah, that we just, we.
Is there a date issue that it's assessed we done by?
No. So instead of trying to wordsmith it now with everybody here, let me just.
Can I move that we table three point three?
Okay.
I don't think we need to do that. We can just not approve it, and then in the next agenda, mark it as the third reading.
Well, it's on the table, so you got to.
Okay. Do you withdraw your motion?
No, I thought we. It's on the table because we amended it, and then we moved it.
Yeah, we did put it on the table.
Yeah, it's on the table.
We didn't vote to put it on the table.
Yes, we did. You moved on the resolution.
We changed it to the second.
You amended it, and now it's on the table. So we got to take it off the table.
I think we just table it, and then we'll take it off the table next time and fix it. I think that's correct. Let's just make it easy. I think that's, I think we should. So Colly moved to table, I will second to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye, I think we should just do it right now.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right. Warrant opposed. Four of us are table, move to carry it, so move to table it, so it'll be tabled, and we'll bring it back. Okay. All right, let me go back. Now, we are moving on to item three point four, policy number six oh nine five, travel, conference, and meeting expenses. This is second reading on adoption. Right. So should we, be it further resolved that upon the second reading of this policy as presented at this meeting, the Board of Education hereby adopts policy six oh nine five, travel, conference, and meeting expenses. I'd like to move three point four as amended in the agenda, to read that it's a second reading. Can I have a motion for three point four as amended?
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, three point four carries, okay.
Recommend four point one instruction was presented. I move four point one.
I'll second four point one.
I have a question.
Sure.
Christine, can you explain to us, or just, I see we have a new varsity softball coach?
So, could you say that?
We have a new varsity softball coach. So she's also our SRO. Are there any issues there?
So the recommendations came from Jason Seymour, who discussed her candidacy with the chief, and there weren't any concerns with her moving forward in this position. Actually, kind of excited about it.
Oh, so am I. Just wanted to make sure that we were okay with that we have the SRO doing.
I think this is great, because it integrates her further into our community.
And she's a softball player.
And she's a college softball player.
Cal softball player.
So it's a bonus.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I think it's going to be great for us.
No, I think, I think it's great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then four point two, non-instructional as presented.
I will accept the superintendent's recommendation for item four four two instruction.
I second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item five, this is our consent agenda, which the board now uses to make more efficient use of its time by adopting in a single motion some relatively routine matters, which are included in items five point one through five point six. Should any of the board members wish to take any item off the consent agenda, they can so move, and we can discuss that. Does anyone need to move anything from item five point one, five point six, off the consent agenda?
I have some questions about five point six.
Okay. So would you like to take that out of the consent agenda?
Or we can.
What?
I mean, we can approve now, we can motion, and we can discuss it.
That's fine. So can I have a motion to approve items five point one through five point six, under our consent agenda?
I'll move that.
I second.
Okay, discussion?
I have discussion. So we're hiring this consultant for just six months. Do we see this extending past six months, or is this only a six-month thing? Is this just a trial period, or how does this go? Because it looks like it's about twenty-four thousand dollars.
In terms of the PR consultant, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, we agreed that we would do it on a year-by-year basis, so at this point, this is where we are in terms of where we found the candidate we wanted. So we agreed upon it being for the remainder of this school year.
But do we see that we're going to need this continuing on, should this be part of our, are you going to add this into the budget, or how's this going to work?
I think we're going to make a determination based on how we utilize the position after some time has passed, and we have this person in place. Based on our need, I anticipate us having to move forward in the future with having a person in this role for the district, because that's where it came from. We need an additional support. But I think our thinking was we need to evaluate that after a certain period of time before we say definitively, this is a good model for us to use moving forward. So I think that's why a six-month duration made the most sense.
Okay.
We may say to you, it's working, we may say to you, you know, we can, we don't need as much support, or we may say to you, we might need more support, depending on, you know, how this goes. So I feel like a six-month trial period is probably appropriate.
And it may continue, as I think we've discussed, on a consultant basis, because our needs may change week to week. There may be some weeks where we need a lot of help, if there's a particular issue that arises, and there are other weeks where there is really not that much work for this person, so it may not make sense for someone to be a more permanent staff member, that a consulting agreement may work for us even moving forward next year. I think that is something that we discussed.
It's an estimate, the ten hours a week is very much an estimate.
Right.
And I anticipate there will be weeks that we have nothing, there may be weeks that there's a lot going on.
And then obviously, it'll be logged in, and we will see at the end of this year, really, how this position panned out, and how it got used on a weekly basis.
You know, I'd just like to say that this is a talented person, and we're lucky to have her. I also think that it's unfortunate that we need to hire a PR person. I have never been in favor of the concept, but I think that, for those who are wondering about this, it's just that times have changed so much with demands for communication throughout all of our communities, whether that be because of social media, whether that be because of intensification of concerns in this particular way. For one reason or another, school districts are really getting taxed with this kind of work. And it's taking away from the time that our administrators have to deal with, to do their jobs, which is really important to us. So, you know, I just want to note that I do believe that this trend is really unfortunate. I would like to use every penny of our budget on programs and on students, and to have to use it just to explain things and communicate things to people in the media that we, you know, people ought to be able to do, is just impossible, and a lot of districts have recognized that in our, you know, hiring this kind of help.
I personally have a slightly different take on that, and I am very much in favor of this, because I feel, some, for the same reasons, I feel that I don't want our administrators having to promote themselves in a certain way, and being able to focus on the business of the district. But the reality of the world we live in is that I think some of our stuff really needs to be promoted and out there to continue the good work that we're doing. So I think that can be really beneficial. We have someone with some expertise to highlight the good works we do, to help us when there is a crisis situation. And also, in terms of communication, it's not just with social media outlets, it's also going to help us with communicating to the people that live in our district in an effective way, so that they're getting all the information about our schools and our programming that they need to get in a really straightforward and easily accessible manner. So I find it a benefit, whether it's necessary or not, or we wish it wasn't. I feel like I'm happy to have a professional doing it, as opposed to having our administrators taxed in that way, that I don't think they should be.
I do feel that our administrators do present what's going on in the district. I mean, all of your efforts and communications through Facebook and Twitter, I mean, I agree with what you said, but I think that your communications are so well laid out and clear. So I do agree with all of the reasons why, you know.
Right.
Let me tell you where this will be most helpful for us, for me, right? So sometimes things happen, and we have to push information out. It's really helpful to have a person not in it, look at it, and read it from a different lens, because their input is extremely valuable before I push it out to the entire community, because they often can pick up nuances that I wouldn't, because I'm in it. Right? So for me, this is going to be invaluable when we have a situation where I'm communicating out information that's sensitive, to get feedback from someone who could act as a parent in a way, and help me prepare it in a more effective manner. So I think this is going to be great for us, plus this particular person knows how to leverage different software programs.
Even to help our newsletters.
In a different way, that may enable us to package our material more effectively.
In a user-friendly way.
So I'm really excited that we're going to have an opportunity to work with someone outside the organization, to put a different lens on what our organization looks like to our community. And we'll reevaluate whether or not it's been effective after a few months of leveraging this person's support.
Right.
So I'm really excited about it. Right? It's going to be good for us.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. We anticipated.
Any other discussions related to any of the items on the consent agenda? Warren, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All in favor of items five point one through five point six?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, facilities. Be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges the change orders approved by the superintendent. These are all changes involved in the high school and the public library regarding the bond construction. Item six, I'd like to take item six point one through six point five, and like a motion to acknowledge the change orders.
I move we acknowledge the change orders.
I'll second the acknowledgement. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, financials. I'd like to take seven point one through seven point three together. Seven point one is a resolution that the board accepts a claims orders report for November twenty nineteen. Seven point two is the revenue status report for twenty nineteen, and seven point three is the appropriation status report for November twenty nineteen. Can I have a motion to approve items seven point one through seven point three?
I move seven point one through seven point three.
Can I have a second?
A second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Eight, notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, January twenty-second, at seven thirty PM. We will have West Orchard student presentations, it'll be here in the academic commons, and our next meeting after that will be Wednesday, February twelfth, seven thirty PM, we will have a presentation from Roaring Brook students. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight fifty-one?
I move to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-one.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Great, thank you.